This is the August 9th meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on August 17th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during the meetings. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, you don't need to fill out the speaker forms, but if you're someone else speaking on an issue or on an item, then you'll need to fill out that speaker request form. Roll call. Rich is missing today.
Do I have a motion for earlier discussion on the minutes of July 26th meeting?
Move to approve that July 26 minutes has been...
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or changes, Brittany? No, okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then consent agenda.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thenson, Deputy Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items for this agenda are recommendations to the planning or the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who can make the final decision. Agenda item number three is conditional use permit review 13-19 for Ken and Corey Tomovic to review a recreational resort to allow for events of 20 people or less in a general agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 13-19 with conditions. Agenda item number four is conditional use permit 17-45 for Gold Run 3 LLC. The agent is Greg Wittenberg to review an existing caboose to be used as a seasonal dwelling on the subject property in a limited agriculture district, and the staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 17-45 with conditions. Lastly, agenda item number five is conditional use permit 18-46 for Brandy and Leanna Wolf to review a guest house on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 18-46 with conditions.
Does anyone want to remove any of these items from the consent agenda? Staff or Commissioners?
Ma'am.
No? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
My second.
Discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number six, special consideration to Trailwood Village Planned Unit Development, PU 21-12, Rex Gortmaker.
Good morning Commissioners, Chutima Saboon, Planning Department. This item is a special consideration to Trailwood Village Plan Unit Development, PU 21-12, to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from 25 feet to eight feet. The applicant landowner is Rex Gortmaker, and he is here in the audience if you have any question for him. The property is .16 acre. Access is off of Trailwood Drive, oh no, sorry, access is off of Trail Drive. There is no spatial flood hazard area on the property. Staff reviewed the existing plan unit development and filed condition number nine that requires a 25-foot rear yard setback. The applicant would like to amend this conditions of approval to build a proposed garage on the subject property. The property consists of a single-family resident, a detached garage, and three sheds. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. County Highway stated that typically the highway department is opposed to setback variances, but in this application, the highway department has no comment. Staff performed a side visit and spoke with the applicant. He has multiple vehicles on the property. He would like to build an addition to the existing garage in order to store his vehicles and clean up his property. There are three sheds in the rear yard which the applicant intends to remove them off the property. Staff received no complaints or concern regarding the requested amendment. Staff would like to... Staff recommends approval of this special consideration of Trailwood Village Plan Unit Development, PU 21-12, with four conditions. That is a typo on the staff report. It says 12 conditions, but it's actually four.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Charlie.
Just one. How many cars we're talking about here, and are they licensed?
I can live the... All these are licensed here except for my dad's. He has two cars in the back.
Okay.
At Humbreys Gornell, and they're going to be in the garage, and then they're going to be at the old place.
You have to come up and say your name. That's the only reason.
It's Rex Gortmaker. What I did is my dad's cars, there's two of them there. One's a 237, and the other one's a GTO, 70 GTO. So I'm going to do is I want to get them out of the weather, and then the sheds are going to be gone, so it'll open all that back up there, which you see the sheds right there.
Right.
They're all going to be gone. That's going to be my...
That's what I read. There's about three of them, or little sheds that are going to be...
Yeah, I want to get rid of them. And like I said, the shed will go right there.
Okay.
And then what I can do is I can put my bunk... All that stuff here that you see on the side where my block is, there's on the side there where the blue car is.
Yes.
All that block is all gone now. If, you know, I cleaned it all up. So what I want to do is I want to add on to the garage here, and then these cars, when I get them, I can put them in the garage so you can't see them.
Yeah.
So, you know, it looks better.
I appreciate it, Rex. Thank you.
And then, like I said, they'll all be gone. And the van here, these cars you see here, there's a couple of them already gone. So I'm trying to clean it up and make it look decent.
I've got a ton of them too. I know what you mean.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Move for approval.
Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. All in favor of PU 21-12?
Aye.
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 Conditional use permit... Oh, thank you. You're done.
Thank you very much.
You passed. Item number seven, conditional use permit CU 21-47, Lindcamp LLC and Sheila Gillespie, is to allow a vacation home rental in an agriculture district and highway service district in accordance with Sections 205, 212, and 510 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
This item is conditional use permit CU 21-47 to allow vacation home rental on the property. The applicant landowner is Lindcamp LLC, Sheila Gillespie. The property is 160 acres. Access is off of Slade Prairie Road. There is no spatial flood hazard on the subject property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. The criteria are on the screen. The staff will read the findings. They are as follow. Criteria one, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, a vacation home rental is considered a residential use and take place entirely within an existing residence. It should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Criteria three, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, the vacation home rental utilized the existing onsite wastewater treatment system. All necessary utilities appear to be in place. Criteria five, access is off of Slade Prairie Road. It should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Criteria six, the property is zone agriculture district and highway service district. The proposed vacation home rental is located in agriculture district, and approved conditional use permit is required to operate the vacation home rental in this zoning district. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property are ranchette district and highway service district. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The property consists of a single-family resident and multiple outbuildings. The request was routed for interdepartmental review. Emergency Services 911 had a concern regarding multiple structures on the property and requested each structure assigned with separate addresses. Staff performed a side visit and verified that the address 11380 Slade Prairie Road was clearly posted. The applicant stated that only the existing family, single-family resident, will be used for our vacation home rental. Other structure on the property will be off limit for guests. No trespassing signs have been posted. Emergency services were satisfied with the information. Separate addresses will not be needed. The subject property, the subject property has an existing conditional use permit CU 83-01 to allow a RV park on the subject property. The location of the RV park is on the south side of the Slade Prairie Road, which is zone highway service district. The applicant stated that the RV park is no longer exist. Conditional use permit CU 83-01 will be reviewed and ended at the later meeting. So this is the area that the RV park used to be. This is on the screen, and that is the shower building, right there. The applicant has complied with all the applicant application and submitter requirement as listed in Section 319 of the zoning ordinance. The applicant obtains an approval, obtain an approval letter from the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, DNR, of the existing wastewater system to allow a maximum overnight occupancy of six people. The applicant applied for a vacation home rental license. The South Dakota Department of Health inspection form stated that the VHR is okay to operate with the six-month timeline to correct the egress window in Bedroom 3. The applicant intends to replace that window. Staff has not received any concern or complaint regarding the requested use or the subject property. Staff would like to recommend approval of conditional use permit CU 21-47 with 17 conditions.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's for you, Brittany. Would you consider if I proposed an 18th condition that would allow under your director capacity that when the egress window, or the State Department of Health, I think is the actual official thing comes in, that this would go on a yearly review? I'm thinking of some of the bigger projects we've got coming down the road, the mining and the hemp. Why not clear up the schedule? You have this authority in most things, and I think it would fit here very well.
So instead of... Because what we had done is on the last condition, we did it in six months. That was time to give her the egress window.
I'm saying go one year after you get your notice.
So once we get verification, just do the one year?
Yes.
I wouldn't have an issue with that.
Would you oppose that?
No.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd propose an 18th condition that allows the planning director, the authority to put this on a one-year review upon receipt of the health department's egress window or we inspect it or something, you know, based upon that receipt.
Does that sound acceptable?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I kind of struggle with that because the department, they come out and have to re-inspect once they get that window. They're on the list that they got to get it inspected. The reason I know that is because I had to do the same thing. And with the height, I had to redo the window and then contact them, and they'd come out... Well, actually, I took the pictures, but they had to... They were pretty diligent on making sure that that was done.
Yeah. The only reason I'm saying is if they go ahead and do that reinspection and approve it, that Brittany would have the authority then to switch this to a normal one-year review rather than running it by us again at six months.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm proposing.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah, good. Are there any other comments, questions for staff?
Do we have a second on that, or...
I think you probably got to get a second. It's a motion I'm adding an 18th condition.
Okay. So motion second for 18 conditions. Any discussion from, any questions, concerns from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think we still have to vote on the actual conditional use...
The actual...
Yes, thank you.
Vote on which?
The conditional use permit, because that would have been just my motion.
That was just your motion to add the 18th? Okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to muddy this up, but I think we could save us some time at meetings in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve conditional use permit CU 21-47?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, rezone RZ 21-24, H&amp;H Land Company Number Two LLC, Brian Hammerbeck Agent.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item eight is rezone RZ 21-24. It is to rezone 169.26 acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. The landowner is H&amp;H Land Company Number Two LLC. The agent is Brian Hammerbeck. He's in the audience if there's any questions. Location is at the intersection of East Highway 44 and St. Germain Road. It involves 169 acres. Current zoning is agriculture, and current land use is agriculture. There is 100-year flood plan on the property. When reviewing approval of a rezone, we look at the criteria of zoning within one-half mile. Currently, there is rural residential district, suburban residential district, and agriculture district. We also look at future land use within a half-mile, and there is suburban residential district, rural residential district, ranchette district, and agriculture district. This was routed out for the interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. Current zoning and future land use in the area and of the subject property identifies properties as rural residential district. Therefore, the applicant's request to rezone appears to be in harmony with the current zoning in the area, and staff is recommending approval of rezone RZ 21-24.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Do I have a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number nine, layout plan LPL 21-49, Jeffrey Shear, to reconfigure lot lines to create lots D1 revised and D2 revised of Lot 17 of Fort Meade Placer 244 in accordance with Section 400.1 of the Pennington County Subdivision Regulations.
Item nine is layout plan LPL 21-49. The applicant is Jeffrey Shear. The location of the property is located at 23098 Thunderhead Falls Road, and it involves 8.92 acres. Current zoning is rural residential district, and there are actually houses located on the property. The property is not vacant. Currently on the property on Lot D1, there are building permits for a single-family residence and for an onsite wastewater treatment system. And on Lot 2, there is also a building permit for a single-family residence and a septic system. Proposed lots, D1 revised will be 4.435 acres and will contain one of the single-family residents as well as onsite wastewater treatment system. And Lot D2 revised will be 4.48 acres and will contain a single-family residence with a septic system. This was routed out for interdepartmental review. There are no major comments or concerns that were received. The applicant is just adjusting a lot line to create a little more acreage for one lot, so staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with the existing lots and current land use in the area. So staff is recommending approval of LPL 21-49.
Any questions for staff? I have one. What's... Is that agricultural land in between? That nice little square in between?
So this green, so this map's a little off. When staff did the report, the maps haven't changed. His whole property is rural residential. They rezoned prior when they did a previous plat. This is just an error on the map that's been fixed by staff. The green is actually open space, which is more for service.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So no questions from anyone? All in favor? Or wait a minute, I probably need a motion. Can I have a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Conditional use permit CU 21-38, David Nancy Miller, to allow for food trucks to be parked and operated on the subject property in a highway service district in accordance with Sections 212 and 510 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
So item 10 is conditional use permit CU 21-38 to allow eight food trucks to park and operate on the subject property. The applicant is David Miller. The size of the property is 3.37 acres, and the location is the west intersection of Mount Rushmore Road and Addison Avenue. This has been in run of the planning commission two times and has been continued twice. The second time it was continued was the applicant's request to continue it. However, the first time to continue it was at the request of the planning commission over the issue of whether or not a traffic impact study was needed. So they continued it so the applicant could work with DOT. I have not heard anything from the applicant on that, and I've contacted the DOT several times. Originally, when I first contacted them, from my understanding, there was some confusion on, he was saying that they were requiring it where our review and our contacts said it might be needed. He was telling staff here that he only wanted 50 people. He was telling them that he wanted 100 people, so there's just, there's that confusion there. So staff wasn't able to get in contact with the actual DOT traffic engineer. They're doing stuff for the rally right now, so he's a little busy. So staff just changed the condition for number 11, that the applicant works with the South Dakota Department of Transportation on their concerns for ingress and egress, because Pennington County really doesn't have the authority to determine if he has to get one or if he doesn't. We can't say that he doesn't have to get one because we don't want him to get one. If DOT requires it, he'll have to work with them to get it. And then staff changed that the maximum be allowed to 75 people. He wanted 100, but he only shows 24 parking spots. If he wants 100 people, he'd have to re-change that to show 33 parking spots. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 21-38 with conditions.
Madam Chair. Yes, so 75 people coming to eat at one time? Is that it?
Correct, yes. I can use it as... That's... He wanted 100... He originally told staff he wanted 50, and then after the meeting, he's like, "Well, I can't control 50. Can I do 100?" And then upon review, he only shows 24 parking spots, and...
Well, so he's going to count. He's going to stand there and count, and when person 76 shows up, he's going to go?
It's either that or the parking is going to be what dictates it. There's a section in the zoning ordinance that requires certain parking for the number of people.
I mean, you could have seven people in one car.
Yeah, if he wants more people, he would just have to provide more parking.
Thanks. Are there other questions?
Madam Chair. Cody, this is a good faith thing to move forward so at least this is off a dead center and doesn't keep rolling over.
Correct. I still haven't received anything from DOT that says it's 100% needed, and in the past when we worked with other government agencies, we just say that they've worked with those agencies to come with it. It's one of those things where if he doesn't do it, and DOT has, is the one who approves that approach from that service route onto there, so if he's not doing what he needs to do with them, they can close that approach.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is the applicant here?
No.
No? Okay.
I move for approval.
I second. Any more discussion on this item? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 11, comprehensive plan... Comprehensive plan amendment CA 2108. TDG Real Estate LLC, Mike Gennaro.
Morning again Commissioners, Jason Thenson, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item number 11 is comprehensive plan 21-08 to amend the comprehensive plan to change future land use from rural residential... I'm sorry. From ranchette residential district to rural residential district. Applicant is Mike, or is Mike Gennaro operating under TDG Real Estate. His agent is DC Scott Surveyors. The location of the property is east of the intersection of Playhouse Road and Oak Meadows Road. The property size is 8.79 acres. It is currently vacant and zoned agriculture district. When basing our recommendation, staff evaluates future land use within one-half mile. Staff found open space, ranchette residential, rural residential, suburban residential, and highway service districts. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and no comments or concerns were received. Future land use of one-half mile identifies several parcels as rural residential district. The request to amend the comprehensive plan appears to be in harmony with current zoning and future land use designations in the area. Board of Commissioners approve minor plat 21-27 on June 1st of this year, and approval of this request satisfies condition number five and allows the planning process to continue. With that, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment 21-08.
Are there any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Charlie.
Just one, Jason. I still have problems when we, and I realize the staff recommends this, but in this one, it's a density thing, but when we take small parcels of land and I look at your map, your comprehensive plan, which was, you know, provided by, I guess, a contractor originally, and then you got, but with your guys' concurrence and the Commissioners, I hate to see small parcels of land, in this case, eight acres. We're switching them, and I don't totally understand that. We're the other neighbors and people that own these properties. Where the other neighbors and people that own these properties, they believed that they were at, what, rural residential? Follow me. I just have problems dropping those in there like that when I see them surrounded by other...
Right, so the applicant is subdividing that property. He's creating a three-acre parcel and a five-plus acre parcel.
Sure. Well, that's what I'm saying, but then the other folks in that same comprehensive plan, they own their properties and, and it is dropping it in there. I don't care what you say. I was opposed to that one acre sitting there. I, I disagreed with that one and I still disagree with these type of things. We drop little parcels in, that tells everybody else they, they've gotta come through and do the same process. But that's neither here nor there. Thank you.
Are there other comments? Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move.
Any comments from the public? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is Rezone RZ 21-14 TDG Real Estate LLC Mike Gennaro.
Agenda item number 12 is Rezone 21-14 to rezone from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant is Mike Gennaro operating under TDG Real Estate. His agent is DC Scott Surveyors. This is the same property we just discussed. Staff did a review of current zoning within one half mile. It's on the screen for your review. We noted open space agriculture, rural residential, suburban residential, and highway service districts. No concerns were noted during interdepartmental review. Staff did, as I mentioned, analyze within one half mile the current zoning. It does identify several parcels as rural residential district. The request to rezone appears to be in harmony with current and current zoning designations in the area. Again, the Board of Commissioners did approve minor plat 21-27 on June 1st of this year and approval of this request will allow the plating process to continue. And staff recommends approval of Rezone 21-14.
Other questions for staff? Any questions from the public? No? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion to approve Rezone RZ 21-14. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item 13, Conditional Use Permit CU 21-46.
Agenda item number 13 is Conditional Use Permit 21-46 to allow an off-premise sign to be located on the subject property. The applicant is Jeff DeVaney. Property location is 23855 Highway 385. Property is one acre zone highway service district. Existing land use is retail stores and there is 100-year special flood hazard area on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven factors the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. I will read staff's responses to the criteria on your screen. Number one, many on and off-premise signs exist throughout this corridor of Highway 385. The addition of an off-premise sign should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, the requested use should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, the requested use should not impede the normal orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for the uses permitted in the district. Number four, the requested use will not require utilities. A floodplain development permit will be required prior to construction of the sign. Number five, the existing approach will provide ingress and egress as to minimize traffic congestion on Highway 385. Number six, the requested use conforms to all applicable regulations in the district for which it is located with, with the approval of this conditional use permit. And lastly, number seven, future land use is identified as highway services, the proposed use is consistent with this land use designation. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review and there were no concerns or objections received. There are multiple signs on this property already, an 8x12 freestanding double-faced on-premise sign as well as two wall-mounted on-premise signs on the structure and multiple temporary on-premise signs. The applicant is requesting to add a 24x28 off-premise sign to the subject property. The proposed sign will consist of two 10x24-foot double-faced advertising signs and they will be unlit. On July 6th of this year, the Board of Commissioners approved variance for this sign to allow it to be within 1,500 feet of a residential district. With that, staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 21-46 with conditions.
Thank you. And are there questions for, for staff?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Didn't, you said there was a prior one. I, it seems like I remember, is that what you just commented on? We approved one earlier this year already for the off-premise for one.
So you heard the, the variance to allow that within 1,500 feet of a residential dwelling or residential district?
Oh, it was the variance that we heard.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so he's not asking for a second one?
No, this is the, the CUP to allow the sign.
To allow, okay. That makes, makes sense. Cause I was thinking it was for a second one that we already heard, but...
Same thing.
Are there other questions for staff?
Madam Chair. Just a quick one, Jason. Do we, on these, do, do the neighbors get notified that we're looking at this the same as the other one?
Yes, they, they got notified during the variance process and...
And did you get any comments back from them? Because we're basically approving a junior billboard and, and we don't, we're not into a lot of building requirements. In other words, the base, beautification of the basin area and, you know, how the city goes with, you have to have so much landscape improvements, that sort of thing. We don't do any of that. And it does concern me that you're sticking up a pretty good-sized sign there, but if you didn't hear from the neighbors, then I'm gonna stay out of the way.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll just make one more call. I remember some other stuff. Look across street, we got the airplane one we just approved, but...
Yeah.
That was a little bit different. But I, I, I agree. I think we never heard anything from the residents that letters were sent out in this business driven by it several times. I, I can understand one, but I'm concerned with more than this one, I would be.
Madam Chair, it is off-premises and that's what always concerns me. They can rent it out to people. So that was my only concern. If he was using it for his business, that, or those places there, that's a different, a horse of another color. Thank you.
Okay.
And the applicant is in the audience if you have questions for him as well.
Anybody have questions of the applicant?
No.
Do I have a motion on this item? To, to approve CU 21-46 with 11 conditions?
So move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 14, Conditional Use Permit CU 21-45 Bruce Kitterman.
Agenda item number 14 is Conditional Use Permit 21-45 to allow one recreational vehicle site to be used as a short-term rental on the subject property in a rural residential district. The applicants are Bruce and Miranda Kitterman. The applicant is in the audience if you have questions for him. Location of the property is 22573 Palmer Road. Property size is 3.02 acres, zoned rural residential district, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, there are seven criteria for the Planning Commission to consider when approving conditional use permits. I will read staff's response to start with number one. The requested use should not be detrimental to the, or endanger the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, the neighborhood is comprised of rural, of residential stick-built and modular homes and accessory structures. The requested use is not one that currently exists in the area. If approved, the use may have long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property values in the neighborhood. Number three, the requested use may negatively affect the normal orderly development or improvement of surrounding property in the area. The requested use is not in harmony with existing land uses in the surrounding area. Number four, access is off Palmer Road via an existing approach. Staff has concerns with RVs potentially blocking traffic while entering and exiting the subject property. The applicant plans to connect one RV to the existing Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources approved onsite wastewater treatment system for short-term rental purposes. Number five, Palmer Road is a paved dead-end road system with limited area for traffic to turn around. Allowing the requested use on the subject property will impact traffic congestion with an increase of RV traffic. Staff has concerns with RVs potentially blocking traffic while entering and exiting the subject property and with RVs utilizing private property at the end of Palmer Road as a turnaround. Number six, the property is zoned rural residential district. The requested use does not conform to the residential character of the zoning district. Similar uses are found throughout the county in agriculture, highway service, and planned unit development districts. Lastly, number seven, the future land use of the subject property is rural residential. Allowing this conditional use permit is not consistent with the current Comprehensive Plan. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County ordinance enforcement stated that there is an open violation on this property. As it sits today, the property does contain a 12x20 shed, an onsite wastewater treatment system, and an ordinance violation for illegal use for renting a camper on the subject property. Staff's analysis of the request is that on June 14th of this year, staff received a complaint that the applicant was renting a camper on the subject property. On August 2nd, staff conducted a site visit and noted the following, that utilities had been extended to support one RV parking spot. A fire pit was present and a current permit approved by the South Dakota Department of Agriculture Wildland Fire was posted. And that Palmer Road is a 66-foot wide platted right-of-way. However, there is 20 feet of improved driving surface. It is a dead-end road. Turnaround slash public right-of-way is platted, however, this area is not, has, sorry, has not been developed and no improved turnaround exists. Staff has concerns with RVs potentially blocking traffic while entering and exiting the subject property and utilizing private property as a turnaround at the end of Palmer Road. Neighborhood consists of stick-built homes, modular homes, and accessory structures. Current zoning is rural residential district. Pennington County Zoning Ordinance states that rural residential establishes large lot residential developments in three areas, being natural, agricultural, and surrounding open space. Future land use of the property is designated rural residential. According to the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan Viewed to 2040, allowed uses in this land use designation are single-family residence, single-family large lot residential, accessory secondary dwellings, public and quasi-public uses such as public schools and churches, agriculture uses, and storage. Today, your request of this nature has not been heard or approved by the Planning Commission. Staff has received multiple phone calls and emails from residences, residents in the neighborhood opposing this request and staff does not believe the applicant's request is in harmony with existing lots, current land uses, or future land uses in the area. And staff recommends denial of the applicant's request that is not in harmony with these, these existing lots, current land uses, and future land use designations. However, if the Planning Commission disagrees, staff recommends conditions be included.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff?
This is just kind of a walkthrough of the property, starting at Palmer Road. You can see here is the 20-foot paved surface. This is coming onto the property. This is where he plans to park the RVs. The utility hookups here. This is looking towards the west. He does have the fire pit over here with the shed. This utility box does have the posted permit for the fire pit from Department of Wildland Fire. That is the fire pit. And this is additional parking to the south of the RV parking spot. And this is just kind of a, an overview of the entire property where the RVs would pull in off Palmer Road here, parked here, and hook up to utilities. And again, the applicant is in the audience if you have questions for him.
I move for denial.
Second.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Sure, if you don't mind. We save the denial for last. Bruce Kitterman, Palmer Road. Couple of questions for you. The, so originally, I have no idea who I talked to. I called in April, I asked, I said, we're putting in one campsite. If you're doing, we're doing one RV site on our property. Sold, if you do that, if you do one on your own private property, no issue. We got a letter stating there was an issue in June, came right in, talked to him about, how do we do this? You gotta do a vacation home rental. Okay, fine, well, we're not a vacation home rental, but we do the application. Gotta go to the Department of Natural Resources. They say you can have up to eight people there, no problem with any of this. We limited it at six as we were advertising. The only complaint that we've heard about, to know that there's multiple, there's news to me, the only complaint we've heard about all summer is the simple fact that we didn't have a permit. So we went through to request the permit and do everything the right way. It seems to me what I keep hearing about is traffic concerns. I'd be curious to know what traffic on Palmer Road. We lived out there for four years. We've owned, owned the property since 2012. Very little traffic goes up and down that road. We haven't had a single complaint or an issue from anybody since traffic. We moved trailers in and out of there all the time personally, including our own RV. We've never had an issue with traffic. I can appreciate the turnaround down at the end. It's not much of a cul-de-sac. I would agree with you there. So we haven't had noise complaints. We've, we've requested hours in our advertisements, things like that. I feel like we've done everything we needed to do to have this approved, including have a property with no ordinance or with no covenants. It's nice, it's clean, it's professional, it's private. I, I don't see how it's a nuisance property and I just have, that's my question.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Bruce, gotta ask you a question right off the bat. You said you called somebody. I cannot fathom that anybody in the planning department would answer your question the way you just stated to me.
That's what I've been told multiple times as well.
Oh, absolutely. I don't believe that. There is not another one around here. If you called, it had to be the wrong number. That's how far my kid could have told you not to put this here.
Well, when we, well, quite frankly, I'll take that with no offense. Thank you very much.
I'm saying, what did you pursue after that? That, that actually got you a permit to do that? That's what I'm saying by, I don't believe that.
Well, the only call was, the call to say, we're putting in an RV site. Maybe that we didn't explain that we plan on renting it. I don't know if, what, where the disconnect there was. So we're putting an RV site in our private property. That was the only call we made. And when we got the letter, we, that saying that there was a complaint came in the very next day. And so we got this letter, I'm a bit confused, what do we need to do? We started filling out forms, we started doing this, we met with the Department of Health. So my, somewhere along the way, we didn't do it right and we got a letter, got a violation, came to find and all that.
I don't see the logic is what I'm saying. Bruce, what if you, you had decided that it was gonna be a salvage yard instead, not an RV site? Follow me, I don't see the logic.
Well, that's a, that's a...
That's a far stretch. I understand that. That's why I'm using it.
Yeah.
But I just don't see where you or your family could see the logic of, this is residential housing and people around us have lots and have, have their rights.
Is it any different than the vacation home rental you approved about 45 minutes ago? My question would be, their vacation home rentals?
But they didn't do it in advance.
We thought we were doing the right thing. That's my only argument. We thought we were doing the right thing. And my question would be, vacation home rentals in and around Rapid City have nothing to do with Pennington County. Outside of Rapid City, there are literally hundreds of vacation home rentals and there are dozens of advertised campsites just like this one on multiple websites. You can find them, they're very easy. And I understand you don't respond unless there's a complaint and I appreciate that. I wonder if there's any general count or a consensus on how many people are doing that this week, right now? Cause I see motorcycles parked in every other driveway through Rapid City and in the county. I just, I have a, my, my feeling is, we're being denied because this county doesn't know what to call us. If we put a, if we put a tiny home out there, we could do it as a vacation home rental and it would likely be approved. If we had two campsites, it could be considered as a campground. That likely wouldn't be approved. We're, we're in the middle where even the Department of Health looked at me sideways and said, you're not providing any facilities. You don't need approval from us. Let me write you a letter. So my, the only thing I'm asking you to consider is, I'm not the only one who's doing this. I'm the only one who's got the letter, who's come, coming from the Planning Commission, filled out all the forms. And I feel like it's being denied based on the simple fact that it's not in the ordinance. Jason himself even said this morning, he said, we don't know where to put you. I don't know where it is in the ordinance. And we're being denied because of them. And we're being denied because of them. If it, if my wife and I talked last night, if the answer is denied, that's totally fine. It's one less thing off our plate that we have to, that we have to worry about. And I can appreciate that, I know there's rules and regulations and county ordinances. We don't fit in those boxes. My concern is that's why we're being denied.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for your consideration.
I just wanted to throw one thing that you, you did, said you didn't understand why other people. The state, and we can't assert, the state law allows a ten-day window in there, uh, because of the rally out here. It's, and it does involve the vacation home rentals, it certainly does, and I agree with you. And I never agreed with the state allowing the ten days, but they allow that in there and you see some of that. So yes, I understand what you're saying, you see this great influx and this, this increase. But this is something that's there year-round. You can use it as you see fit once we approve it, that's a lot of difference.
Well, I, I agree, yep, yep. And I could cite example after example of people who've done this year after year after year, all summer long. Right, right under, I mean, that's my complaint.
Madam Chair.
Bruce?
Yes, sir.
Then you need to lead a charge for the county to obtain additional enforcement because that, that's what it comes down to. It's, it's like complaining about the candy store being robbed, uh, and there are no policemen on the block. Well, there aren't. And in reality, I sympathize with you. You're sort of a good guy who shows up and thinks, I'm gonna try to fill out the forms and comply with the regulations. But the reality is, there's a lot of this that goes on, I agree. Not, not just in this particular way, but throughout the county. Violations of numerous types and it's a frustration, but it's pretty hard for us to then say, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna let Kidderman go here because he came up and he's a good guy. Unfortunately, it doesn't work quite that way.
Well, good guy aside, I mean, one, we, we, I'll argue, as long as you wanna listen, we did things the right way. And we just simply don't fit in the ordinances and that's why we're being denied.
Well, there's always something that doesn't fit in the ordinance, keep that in mind. I mean, you, you have some alternatives here, they might be more expensive, they might be not what you wanna do, but there are provisions. If you wanna run some kind of a rental operation, there are options for you. And I sympathize, well, you didn't plan on that, but.
Well, yeah, I, I appreciate there are other options you've approved, several of them already today.
Madam Chair.
Yes, lady.
Bruce, uh, yeah, you've done a lot of work, I mean, I could see that here. And, and just from the conversation that, that's been happening here already, I do think there was probably some miscommunication, you know, with, that's why phone calls are never good and emails, it's in-person type thing. Because you did say something about you wanted to put a campsite on your, your property. Now, Jason, if a person wanted to have utilities and another campsite on their own personal property, would that be?
Typically, these are approved if somebody wants to live temporarily in an RV while they build a house, uh, in that sort of zoning district, cause it's temporary use, it's not permanent. Uh, this just doesn't seem to fit the character of rural residential district.
Cause the reason why I asked that is I looked at the property on, uh, Mountain, Iron Mountain Road that had a residential and a RV hookups too and, and it was zone different. But I mean, that's why I asked if he was, some people wanna have a spot for their RV, for temporary, for family to come, I don't know if that's how it got communicated. But I, I don't think he tried to mislead anybody. I mean, you don't go through all this paperwork with the state for a vacation home rental. I mean, that's, he went through a great effort. I'd like to see you guys work together to, to see if there is something for it to work out.
I think that would be very amicable for us at least, I mean.
At some point.
At the end of the day, Commissioner, if no is the answer, gentlemen, we can live with that, I really sincerely. Obviously, I think that's the wrong answer, but we can, we can live with that. If there's an amicable way to do this, because in my mind, I keep thinking that if we, if we bought a tiny home and put it in there and use it as a, as an Airbnb, we would probably be approved.
I, I totally agree. I think there's some gray areas and something needs, I mean, things are gonna be changing in our community and throughout the country as far as tiny homes and, and, you know, uh, even the city is doing accessory dwellings on their properties and so forth, and we have some of that stuff. So I think it's something that the person that's looking now whether it should be a park mod, then you get into park models and campers and there's a lot more to it than, than you're talking about. But, um, I don't think things are gonna go your way today because, because of the concerns that have been out there and in the hills and, and so forth. But I think, uh, you got the director and the assistant director's attention right here. So I mean, you, and you know who they are, so I think you could probably sit down with them.
As we were going through this, we weren't quite sure how to put it and what even applications we needed. So I requested a meeting with the director and, and the enforcement agent that sent us the letter and I thought we were all on the same page as far as how to move forward, at least to get to today. Quick search of vacation home rentals within a ten-mile radius of Rapid City, there's almost seven hundred, so.
Now, one other question, sorry. Jason, you said there were several complaints, but yet in our packet, I don't have any written complaints or what was, what was the concern?
I think the neighbors had a lot of concerns about the fire pit mainly. And just that the, the campers coming in and out, they had the turnaround concern at the end of Palmer Road. Not being able to actually turn around without going onto other people's private property. But I think fireworks and, uh, were a big concern noted by one of them. A lot of those were phone calls, so they didn't make it into the packet. And then the fire pit, they had a, a lot of extreme, uh.
I could really see that the fire pit.
Right. I have a question. Phone calls from concerned citizens are okay? I, I made the same phone call. So a citizen complaint phone call, so where they were just phone calls, so they're not documented, same as mine in April. Right, if we're being fair. The fireworks, um, I guarantee you, nobody set off fireworks. We've had a fire permit out there since two thousand and fourteen, the day we built it. We got a permit to do the culvert, we got a permit to do the septic, we got a permit to do the fire pit. We get it inspected every three years, just like it's supposed to. We post it, we check the fire danger and restrictions. If phone calls are sufficient one way or the other. I mean, and I guarantee you, we have house rules that we printed that we, that we sent in. Number one, open fire is strictly prohibited, we're part of the Black Hills Fire Protection District. Fireworks are strictly prohibited, those are very, very clearly spelled out. And I'd like to know how many of our guests ever went down and used the turnaround? If any. So I think that some of these complaints could be completely unwarranted. But if they wanna complain about what may have happened, what could have happened, what might happen in the future, I guess they're within their rights and I understand that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Bruce, I appreciate what you're saying and I, um, am gonna kinda go on your side on this because I understand that people will be driving down the road with a camper. What's the difference of a VRBO and the family driving down with their SUV? It is a trailer, but people can have trailers because they have their ATVs. It is not much different than a tiny home, except the person is bringing their own home and it's, you know, granted, it's not there for very many days, but it is a not, a lot different than somebody coming up to a, to a tiny home with their trailer full of ATVs and going ATVing for the weekend in the hills. And I think this is something that the county needs to definitely relook at because I, 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 I mean, it's different if it's a campground. It is one campsite on whatever, three acres or.
Right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So the rural residential zoning district allows for stick-built modular homes and accessory dwellings, not for RV sites. And, and I think that's the sticking point for staff. You know, the turnaround, the fire pit, those are all kinda secondary, but primarily, it just doesn't fit the zoning district or the residential character of the neighborhood.
So if you nix the fire pit? I mean, I mean, could it be relooked at? If, if the fire is the biggest concern and the biggest complaint?
The, the biggest concern is that it doesn't match the character of the zoning district.
Sure.
Right, or the, the neighborhood itself is, is residential.
Right, I, I understand that. I'm just thinking if that could be something that could be relooked at because it is one.
No, the fire pit, uh, wouldn't really have anything to do with staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation is primarily based on the zoning district and that it doesn't fit the character of that zoning district.
Jason, what's the nearest commercial property?
Uh, that's a good question, I could look that up, I don't think there is one nearby. So like I stated in the, in the staff report, um, these uses are primary, if they are allowed, they are primarily in highway service, agricultural, and planned unit development.
I guess.
Madam Chairman, while he's doing that, I wanted to comment though. And you saw me talk about the sign the same way, whether the people opposed it. And when we're talking RVs, we're talking vacation home rentals, I'm swayed, I'm just a citizen, I'm swayed by those that are sitting there with property, their investment involved, and they oppose it with, with specific reasons. And I think you're, you may, if you even get an opportunity to refile, you're gonna have some opposition. Obviously, if people took the time to call in, we don't, we don't find that they call in or write in very often, so.
We do have a speaker.
Right, so, uh, uh, that's where I'm getting at. I'm not sure it's a shoe-in, even if we go another direction, I guess, is what I'm throwing in. In my mind, it's not a shoe-in if we go on another direction and allow some latitude or flexibility.
We do have a, a speaker request from Greg Hilt.
Madam Chair, uh, to answer your question about the commercial zoning. This is the subject property here. Uh, as you can see, I have to zoom out quite a ways. It looks like the nearest commercial is all the way over in, uh, Black Hawk.
Okay, thank you.
Um, as we're talking, that brought up a couple of other, one, one point and one question. Um, if trailers is the issue, you'd be hard pressed to find a neighbor out there without at least one trailer of their own. If trailers up and down the road are the, are the real issue. Every single person out there has at least one, maybe multiple trailers, campers, anything else they have, right? In and out, off the road is not an issue. Fires, fireworks, if that's not the major complaint, I'm not sure why it was brought up. Just a question.
Do those neighbors that have trailers also have a house?
I'm assuming that, so our property, when we bought it, as far as I know, Mr. Hilt is my next door neighbor, he could probably answer this question, he's lived out there longer than we did. We bought the property in two thousand and twelve. As far as I know, there was one other forty-acre parcel farther to the northeast at the end of the road. I believe those were the only two that were undeveloped. I, I believe so. So we put the infrastructure in in two thousand and fourteen, lived out there, manufactured home with intention of building, I have kids. At that point in time, we're in Pineville West, we found a house on West Main, we were bumping rate of rate ground. We moved back to town and sold the manufactured home, we've owned the property as being vacant since then. And it, I do believe that there are only two that access from Palmer Road that are undeveloped. So yeah, they would, they would live in a house, yep.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, one of the things that I would comment since I've been back on, one of the normal things, has nothing to do with structures or anything else, it has to do with uninvited guests, is one of the biggest comments that I get phone calls on regarding everything from vacation home rentals to the use of these trailers. It's not necessarily the structure or the plan. It's an uninvited guest into a neighborhood that they, they can't control.
Yet everyone this morning was approved.
My name is Greg Hilt, I'm the neighbor right next door to the site. And the fire pit is one of my concerns, but also, um, probably fifteen years ago, I was broke into by an asphalt crew that was just traveling through and doing asphalt jobs up and down our roads. That's another concern, is strangers being in my neighborhood. I've had some of these people already wander over onto my property. I've had their dogs were wandering over on my, there's nothing to keep them off of my property. We're not fenced or anything out there. Uh, so how they did wander over, I mean, they didn't wander far over, but I'm, you know, he's probably thirty feet from my property line is where the campers are, but yes, right in that area. So that, you know, just some concerns like that about, and we didn't move out there to have a campsite next to us. We moved out there to be in a quiet residential area. And twenty years ago, when I moved out there, we, probably short, probably five, six years after I moved out there, I tried something too, I will admit, I tried to have one or two elderly people in my home as an assisted living home. I got turned down for that, I couldn't, you know. And, you know, the crime and thing, this was about what was brought up in traffic with the elderly people. I mean, I flat got turned down, I tried to do the permit, I went all the right ways too. So, I mean, we went through all the right channels with that one and we got turned down. Like I say, the fire pit is a concern. Also, there was some tent campers that camped down below. They didn't have bathrooms in their camper, they camped down below down there. Where were they going to the bathroom is that? I mean, there's no facilities there. I mean, there wasn't any camper there when they were there. This last batch had a camper in three tents, or two tents, I'm sorry, there was. And they were sleeping in all of them, so is that just one campsite or is that three?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hilt? Thank you.
Opportunity for rebuttal. Seems far-fetched to be penalized for something, something that happened to Greg fifteen years ago. I've heard the story of the people that broke into his house, it seems like they hit a bunch of them. I didn't even own the subject property at that point in time. I'm sorry that happened, I had nothing to do with that. It was a rogue road crew that was paving Palmer Road and they both broke into multiple houses, if I'm not mistaken. We have very specifically listed, no tent camping without RV or camper. You have to have facilities, we do not have facilities, we don't advertise it as a campsite for tents. The folks that were out there last week had an RV and three kids that spent the night in a tent in the front yard.
Thank you.
If that constitutes three, then I guess we should be applying for three campsites.
Madam Chair.
And if a couple of dogs went over to his property, I'm more than happy to fence it. There's been multiple times we've been out there and Greg's been arguing to. If we wanna fence it, we'd be glad to fence it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, lady.
I was under the impression that you were living on site.
Excuse me?
I, I was under the impression, Bruce, Bruce, that you were living on site, but you don't, there, nobody lives on site, so it's a vacant lot that you've created just to rent out. You had a double wide down there at one time?
We needed to use it somehow. And this was our solution to try to generate a rural revenue to recover property taxes and expenses for the annual waters, three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Property taxes.
I, I guess.
So that's why, no, we don't live there.
I was, I was really leaning towards your way when you were, when I was listening to this, but I thought you had onsite, uh, house, cause you were talking about the double wide. But since it's not, I think the best route would be is, as you said, you buy a, a tiny home and put it down there and then come and ask for vacation, I mean, you did all the work for a vacation home rental, you know what the work is. You've got the one acre, over one acre plot, but I think, uh, this ordinance, you know, I was really leaning to it. If, if it was an additional unit and you were living on the property, I would, I'd probably wanna go this way. But for a single one with no, nobody around, I think I gotta side with some of my partners on here that, you know, it's just.
Question about, is there a consideration for conditions? I mean, we live on West Main Street, we're ten minutes away, we live six miles from there. We're out there every other day maintaining, we maintain that property as good or better than any of our neighbors. The neighbor to the right of us, on the other side of me, Greg's there, you can see his white building the other side. He ha, has trash and a mattress on the side of the road, it's been there all summer. And I think that the unintended guests or the fire pit, I mean, that fire pit has not been used a single time when it shouldn't have been. It's permitted. I, I just, I just really feel like some of these, some of these complaints are unwarranted in the simple fact that one of my neighbors doesn't like it. That's a tough justification to swallow.
I guess, the only thing I would be willing to do is if this commission's willing to do it. There, there's already a motion on the floor, it would have to be someone else, is to continue it to two weeks so a person can go out and actually walk the premises and, and see, you know, go from your house to their, is it ten minutes or is it forty? go from your house to there, is it ten minutes, or is it forty-five? Is it, you know? That's the only other consideration I'd probably make.
We do have a motion on the floor to deny.
I'll try it. I'd offer a substitute motion to continue to the next planning commission, so a person can actually go walk the lot and view is the requirements that all the stuff that he's gotten is to be able to.
Is there a second on that motion?
I second.
So we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the next meeting? All in favor of that, of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to continue, substitute motion to continue failed. Okay, we're back to the motion to deny. Is there any more discussion on this item? All in favor to, of denying conditional use permit CU 2145? Say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Three to two. Three, two to four, I'm sorry, I don't count very well. Wasn't counting myself. You have all that? Okay. All right, thank you.
Final question, if I may, Chair?
Mm-hmm.
What's the process of the next step of appeal? Or any sort of a formal process to reconsider something?
Brittany, or Jason?
Circuit Court Appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a recommendation? You might wanna consider putting this in ordinance, this isn't gonna go away. I mean, this is, this is, there are thousands and thousands of people that are traveling like this now. And this is, this is... I don't think that I'll be the last one in here asking for the same permit. So thank you for your time, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. County Board Report?
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Molander, Planning Director of the County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from their July twenty-sixth meeting and the August third Board of Commissioners meeting.
Any items for the public? I don't see any more public, so I'll say no. Items from the staff?
Items from staff is the building permit report for July. As expected, we're, anticipated, we're still above for the year at this time. We had twenty-one single-family residents building permits in July. Year-to-date, just in single-family residences, we're about a hundred and eight for the year, and then four hundred and six total permits for the year, which we're ahead about, almost two-thirds what we were last year at this time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do we really do eight hundred thousand dollars in carports and garages?
That's what we consider the assessed value is when we evaluate them. It's based on either contractor bid or a general price per square footage, what the market is for them, yes. Lot of outbuildings and garages.
When you include that.
Yes.
Just one more question, and it'll be quick. We still, like, if there's a roof over something, then it's a building permit?
If they're replacing the shingles, no, if they're actually doing the sheeting.
I meant if they're building something new, and it has a roof.
Yes.
I'm thinking of decks and things like that.
Yes, if they enclose it, they still have to get a building permit for a deck. But that usually comes with, it's attached to the single-family residence, so it's usually a residential addition.
Thank you.
Items from the membership? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Discussion, anyone? All in favor, say aye.
Discuss.
Aye.
Thank you.